I call to order this regular meeting of the Morris Township Planning Board for April 17th, 2023. The legal notice required in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act has been satisfied and a statement certifying same will be executed. You now please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sonya, could you take the roll call?
Mr. Alessa?
Yeah.
Is Ben order?
Here.
Mr. Nun?
Here.
Mr. Rabbit?
Here.
Marty?
Here.
Mr. Benoit?
Here.
Mr. Flowers?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Bye?
Here.
Mr. Flynn?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Slate?
Here.
Nice Sonia Santiago.
Behind you.
Behind you.
Mr. Barrett?
Miss Dennis. Okay, um, I guess we have two sets of minutes to, to consider, okay? So let's go chronologically, any comments on the March 20th minutes? Again, Sonya, thank you for putting them together.
Yeah, these are great.
They're really helpful. Thank you.
Any comments on the minutes from the 20th? I'll entertain a motion to accept them.
I'll move that.
Second.
Forget it, is that a roll call or a voice vote on minutes?
I do roll, roll call in case there were anybody absent.
Okay. Oh, right, right. I was here on the 20th. Yes, you got, yes, I'm, yes. Yes, I was here on the 20th.
And I was here also.
If you're nine for nine, you can do it by voice. If you're nine for nine, it looks like in the minutes you are, so you're fine.
Okay, uh, all in favor of approving the March 20th minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you post? Okay, I guess we will approve those. Moving forward now to the April 3rd. That's, that's correct, April 3rd, right? Any comments? Any thoughts, changes, issues with the April 3rd minutes?
I make a motion, we approve them as read.
A second.
Are we okay here? I, I was not here, so I.
I was not here.
Mr. Nun abstain?
I'll abstain.
For all time, Mr. Rabbit?
Yes.
Mr. Alessa?
Yes.
Same order?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benoit?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Yes.
And thank you. And we have two resolutions from the April 3rd meeting. Want to introduce those?
Sure, first resolution is for JCPNL. It was a preliminary and final major site plan with some variance relief for a two-phase installation of emergency generators. And Mr. Warner prepared the resolution and I, you know, from what I was able to review, I can say that the resolution accurately reflects the testimony that evening and the board's findings that.
Any comments of the board members? Or professionals on the, on the resolution as presented?
I'm making motion to approve.
Your second?
Second.
A roll call, you have the ruling, right?
It's the rabbit.
Yes.
Is Ben order?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Benoit?
Yes.
Mr. Alessa?
Yes.
Okay. And we'll be on to our second resolution from that evening.
Second resolution, order of St. Benedict. One-story addition to the existing Fine Arts Center. The applicant eliminated any relief that they needed in, in addition to the preliminary and final site plan, so it's just the board's approval of the site plan application. This resolution was prepared by Mr. Warner and I think it accurately reflects the testimony that evening and the board's findings.
Any comments or on the resolution as presented?
I make a motion, we accept the resolution as drafted, second.
Call the roll sign?
Mr. Rabbit?
Yes.
Same order?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Mr. Benoit?
Yeah.
Mr. Alessa?
Yes.
Good, okay, thank you. And I guess we have, oh, one public hearing for the evening tonight? You want to introduce that, Sonya?
This is PBO 9-22 Solar Landscape LLC with site plan variance application. Block 10104, Lot 1, 307 East Hanover Avenue in the I-21 zone. Applicant proposes to install roof-mounted solar panels along with associated equipment and pad and transformer.
Okay. Is our, the applicant ready to present?
Yes, we are. For the record, I'm Donna Jennings from the law firm of Willens, Goldman and Spitzer on behalf of the applicant. As the board secretary correctly indicated, the applicant is here this evening seeking minor site plan approval and several bulk variances to install roof-mounted solar panels with ground-mounted accessory equipment, transformer and utility poles on the roof of the existing Cube Smart Buildings located at 307 East Hanover Avenue when identified as block 10104, Lot 1 in the township tax maps. Specifically, the following variances are requested. Bulk variances from ordinance section 95-34.4C2 with respect to the visibility of solar panels from the ground where same should not be visible and where no screen or parapet is provided in the flat roof to block the roof panels from view. We also need bulk variance relief from ordinance section 95-27.4 and the schedule of area bulk and yard requirements with respect to front yard and side yard setbacks for the accessory structures. In support of the proposal, the applicant rely on the testimony of Kevin Shelley, the site engineer, and John Takania, the professional planner. Collectively, their testimony will demonstrate that the applicant is entitled to the requested minor site plan and related bulk variances. With respect to the bulk variances, the applicant will demonstrate that both the positive and the negative criteria are satisfied. That is, with respect to the positive criteria, the proposed use, the solar panels have been deemed inherently beneficial, thus satisfying the positive criteria as a matter of law. In addition, the proposed solar panels also advance several purposes of the municipal land use law, including the promotion of renewable energy and the more efficient use of land. We all remember when solar panels first came out, we're actually putting them on our farms and vacant land and somebody dawned on them and said, hey, we've got a lot of rooftops, why don't we start putting them on the buildings instead of our nice virgin land? And so that's where you see a lot of the projects being placed on now. With respect to the negative criteria, this is an industrial area and we believe that there are no adjoining users or property owners who will be affected by the installation of the solars on the panel on the, on the roof of the Cube Smart Buildings. And just as a matter of record keeping, we do have several reports that we received. The board planners review letter, August 18th, 2022. Fire department memo dated July 14th, 2022. An environmental commission memo dated August 5th, 2022. We did submit revised plans to address what we believe were most of the comments in those reports. And Mr. Shelley, of course, will go through that with you this evening, so we can have him sworn in first if the board would like to begin.
Yes, please.
Maybe you want to use that, I don't know, sure.
You swear that any testimony you will give tonight will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And can you state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Kevin Shelley, last name S.H.E.L.L.Y.
And if you could, Mr. Shelley, for the benefit of the board, please give your background and qualifications.
Sure, I am a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey since 2012. I testify in front of various boards across the state. I have not previously had the pleasure of testifying in front of this board, but my, again, I have been accepted across various municipalities across the state and my license is current and in good standing.
The board accepts qualifications?
I'll accept, go ahead.
Thank you. And just for the record, Kevin, the site plan was prepared under your direction?
Yes.
And if you could describe the site and the area around the site, and if you're going to refer to any exhibits, let's mark those into evidence, please.
Some exhibits?
Yeah, well, but we're, yeah, we're, it'll stand up. And if you're going to stand and address them, could you help, hold the microphone?
Yes.
Or be close so that we can hear you.
I will grab the microphone. The, the first exhibit I have prepared is an aerial exhibit for the subject property, which is zoomed out to show again the, the adjacent surrounding uses.
All right, so let's mark that A1, I reckon. Aerial exhibit. And is there a date on that?
It is dated, uh, April 14th, 2023. And I have a second exhibit, which we can mark as exhibit A2, which is a rendered site plan for the property.
And it's colored?
Colored, yes. I'm going to utilize exhibit A1, just going over the existing property. Again, it's located as block 10104, Lot 1, containing approximately 5.2 acres. It's located at 307 East Hanover, East Hanover Avenue, and it's a Cube Smart self-storage facility. It's located in the industrial zoning district. Property is surrounded by several commercial industrial type uses, including car dealerships, the Morris Town Public Works Building and sewage treatment facility to the northeast, the Morris County Correctional Facility to the southeast, a concrete facility and a landscape supply yard to the south, an additional storage facility and a warehouse directly adjacent to and across the street from the property. The applicant is seeking minor site plan approval to construct roof-mounted solar panels as part of the state's community solar program and associated ground-mounted equipment. The panels extend a maximum of nine inches above the roofline of the existing buildings and they will all be located a minimum of six feet from the edge of the building roofs to provide a clear walking clearance around the entire roof. The overall system includes 1,085 modules covering just over 35,000 square feet of the existing roof area. Power generated by this project is expected to be about 600,000 kilowatt hours, which is enough energy to power nearly 100 homes annually. And for anyone not familiar with the community solar program, it provides equal access to renters, homeowners, businesses alike. The power generated by this project will be sold to residents within Morris Township and surrounding municipalities at, at a 21% discount from their current electrical rates. And at least 51% of the power produced by, by this facility will be distributed to homes of low and moderate income households. The applicant's solar landscape is very active in the state's community solar program. They have completed about 40 projects within the program and have another 100 in the works right now across the state. The ground-mounted equip, equipment is very minor, includes a pad-mounted transformer and an equipment rack within. Exhibit A2 is located along the eastern property line, directly up against the existing fence along that side of the property. Again, it includes a transformer plus a equipment rack with inverters, a disconnect and panel board. Again, the prop, the equipment is located in the lawn area between the existing edge pavement and the, and the tree line along the eastern property line. As required to provide the power needed to this project, the applicant is required to install four new utility poles at the front, at the entrance along Hanover Avenue. It's located on the site plans, but in the top right corner of, of exhibit A2, the, it depicts the four utility poles. As required by JCPNL, each utility pole has a specific purpose. Those purposes cannot be combined, you can't have two pieces of infrastructure on a single pole. They require four poles within about 50-foot span of each other to provide the necessary disconnects, metering and the fuses to protect their infrastructure along the main distribution line along East Hanover. Again, the location of those is in the northeast corner of the site, parallel to the existing railroad tracks and, and overhead transmission lines that run along the east property line. They're out of sight, generally, they're not impacting visually any of the neighbors or the existing, or the adjacent properties. And again, it's at the discretion of JCPNL, they have to follow their guidelines, their standards, call for four poles, that's what we're proposing.
If you could just touch on the other variances requested?
Sure, so the other variances, your zoning ordinance indicates that in any non-residential zones, accessory structures or uses shall be located no closer to any property line than the permitted principal structures. As the, again, the ground-mounted electrical equipment is located on the east side of the property line, which is approximately two and a half feet from the eastern property line, whereas the rear setback along that side of the property is 15 feet. And on the front side of East Hanover, the front yard setback is 35 feet. And with the new utility poles being installed, the closest pole to East Hanover i- is being installed directly on the property line. So both of those items would require variance relief. Additionally, as noted, the, a variance for minimum or maximum impervious law coverage is also required. 86.3% is currently existing on the site today, whereas 75% is the maximum permitted. About 100 square feet of new impervious area is proposed for the ground-mounted transformer and the electrical equipment on the ground. The 100 square feet doesn't increase the 86.3%, but again, it is a, bless you, it is a addition to an existing non-conforming condition, so we would respectfully request a relief from that item as well. Two additional variances are required from the township's roof-mounted solar ordinance, 90, ordinance section 95-34.4C2. As Ms. Jennings indicated, the, the two variances are that panels may not be visible from the ground and that panels shall be screened with a parapet roof from, from view. The existing buildings have no parapets, they're small self-storage facilities, no parapets on the roofs. And the way the site topography is, East Hanover Avenue is a couple of feet higher than the rest of the property. That driveway drops down into the site where the rest of the site is pretty clear and level. So when you're sitting at the entrance out on East Hanover, your car is up pretty high and you can see, slightly be able to see the exist, the, the proposed panels up beyond the roof. Again, the panels do not extend more than nine inches above the existing roof lines, so we don't believe that they would have a, an impact on any of the surrounding properties.
And Kevin, you have an opportunity to review the three reports, correct?
I have.
And those were actually generated when we first submitted our application?
Correct.
And we have since submitted supplemental, um, plans?
Correct.
And you believe they address the issues raised in the reports?
I do.
Is there any additional comments that you'd like to make to the board?
No, I think it's a pretty straightforward application, roof-mounted solar with some minor ground-mounted equipment. Due to the nature of the, the town's ordinances, some minor relief is needed to comply with your standards.
That's all I have for direct.
Thank you. I guess, board professionals, I think they need to be sworn in too, right?
Uh, yeah, I can do that.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Slate, any testimony you'll give in front of the board will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yeah, I do.
Any comments or consent?
I just wanted to confirm that all the panels will meet the fire department's minimum setback of six feet from the edge of the building.
Correct.
And, um, I, I may have missed this, you may have touched on that, but technically the pad-mounted transformer and the equipment would trigger a setback and that would be considered a structure for that side yard setback. Do you have a dimension for that? I mean, I don't.
It's two and a half feet, we can add a dimension to the perfected site plans if the board does fuse this favorably, but it's two and a half feet, which is the existing fence line that's there now to the property line.
And, uh, you know, my only other concern relates to the, the four telephone poles proposed to be installed to, uh, you know, handle that equipment for JCPNL. You know, I did reach out to JCPNL, I, I feel like it's kind of going to be an eyesore, you know, four poles within, uh, you know, 60 feet from one end to the other. I'm not quite sure how JCPNL handled that or how applicants handled that on other sites, but this is, you know, the decent amount of panels going in here, but you know, we had a couple of them off down Campbell Avenue, um, you know, a couple of county facilities. And I'm not quite sure what they did with their switchgear and the stuff that, uh, you know, JCPNL is, is proposing here, but I, you know, I think there's a better solution to, you know, something could be done that's not quite as ugly as four telephone poles within six feet.
So we've actually done this a few times and whenever it's JCPNL, they don't budge. They're like, we want our four poles and that's it. And they do trump, um, you know, they're regulated by the Board of Public Utilities and they, we don't get an approval here, then I file an appeal actually with the Board of Public Utilities who would then say that's where the poles are going.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that they.
Yeah, I mean, we tried before to move them. And they're just like, no, this is our regulations, this is what we want, we find, uh, I think one of the poles is just redundant, just to, in case the other pole falls down.
So it's the first pole has a fuse which protects their main distribution lines out of the street. So that's the very first pole that's located on the front property line. Second pole has a disconnect, it's a box with a lever that would be on the ground, they need it mounted up on the pole. The third pole has their meter, the fourth pole has another disconnect so that they can fully isolate their meter. These are their standards, it's, again, if we could do it with one pole or two poles or no poles, we would be none the happier, but the, we're in their jurisdiction, we have to follow their guidelines. We have their typical detail, I could pass it out if anyone wants to see it. We can mark these as exhibit.
A3?
Have you done any installations where there's underground facilities and they're able to, uh, you know, mount this equipment as a different fashion to another pole?
Kevin, can you answer that? And not even the site engineer normally.
Not, not that I'm aware of for a three-phase application like this. Some of the smaller scale ones don't, some of the older ones are also in casing territory and they allow us to do different things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, it's on the second page.
That's where the pad, that's where the transformer will go.
No, that's, this is just a diagram. Standard for three-phase system.
And this is taken directly from their handbook, minus the four red circles that we've added for visual effect. But again, the, the idea is that they've, they need a series of items and again, they cannot be combined into multiple uses on a single pole. So each pole has a very minor specific use and they need all four of them. So that the same uses are noted on the site plans that were submitted. Each pole is labeled for the specific purpose of what they're used for. Again, if there's another way that we could do it that doesn't require four poles, we're happy to continue working, but the applicant has done extensive work with JCPNL to get the approvals necessary on their end for this project. And this is the system that JCPNL has said must be put in.
Mr. Jim? The picture on the back of the handout, what is that?
Sorry, the section, second page of the handout is a image of the east side of the property where the ground-mounted transformer and the electrical, and the rack for the electrical equipment will be going.
So maybe we should mark that A4?
Uh, sure.
And that's a photo again of what?
Uh, of the location for where the ground-mounted transformer and rack will be going on the east side of the property. Again, there's a existing curb line and about 10 feet between the curb and the fence line, which is now fully vegetated over.
I, I, I'm not clear on, I, is the equipment going behind this hedge or?
The, the, the equipment is going between the curb line and the vegetated fence here. So it's going in the grass area, but this is just.
With a, with a six-foot chain link fence?
Correct.
And no buffering?
Correct.
The rocks are going to stay?
The rocks are going to stay, there's a drainage inlet that's located in that space. One of the comments in the environmental commission review letter was about a steep slope in this area that was found on a map. The purpose of the picture is to show that there are no steep slopes in this location. Uh, and again, it just also showed that this is the location where the equipment's going, nobody can see it, it's all internal to the property. So it will be screened with that fence from the internal side, but nobody else can see it.
This is the side.
Yes, yep.
Is that little black dot?
On the exhibit A1, where that, where it is, so we're, and which way we're looking at it?
Look like that, right on the side, on the bottom of the plan here, there's a small transformer and then a rack. Again, either the, the, the transformer will be fully enclosed by the six-foot chain link fence around it. The, the rack with the equipment on it is no taller than four foot in height.
Was that determined by JCPNL or by you? That location?
The location, it's internal, it needs to be accessed, so the fact that it's down the drive aisle where their vehicles can come in and access it and maintain it.
So there's no other place that made sense to them?
No, no, there's, originally we had it in the front of the site, near East Hanover in the corner.
Right.
And then there's a lot more trenching in the existing parking lot to bring feeds from each of the buildings back to there. So this was a more centrally located space for the transformer and the equipment to run all of the lines from there to all the buildings. Uh, so that this location made more sense for the applicant as well as the site.
Mr. Chairman, I remain confused because there's a picture that showed it on the corner of the building and now you're saying it's been changed, but I'm not clear.
The review letters that were prepared by the board's professionals were from the summer and August.
Understand.
We've submitted revised plans, delays that were submitted back in January.
All right, so now, can you show me where it is now?
Look at the very bottom of the plan along the east property line.
Okay.
Originally, it was located up in the front.
Okay, gotcha, and that's along the railroad track, right?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
So there's nothing going in what's now the front yard?
Poles.
The poles.
Just the poles, so technically, we believe that they're an accessory, yes. Correct.
Adjacent to the railroad?
Yes.
Parallel to the railroad.
And if I, if I'm reading the plans and then you go underground from there to the transformer?
Correct.
And, okay. And you don't show any disturbance, you're intending to leave the shrubbery that's there now, that's kind of the screen there if you can?
Along that fence line, yes. And, and, and in the front too, yes.
In the front, yes.
Yep, there's two poles that go in front of the, the vegetated buffer that kind of screens that space. We're going to go over top of those and then go underground once we're internal to the site.
Just a quick question, how long, are those standard-sized telephone poles or are they shorter?
Standard size, they're 45-foot poles, they drive them anywhere from five to 10 feet deep, so, but it would be a typical utility pole height. But again, it's located between the existing building along the East Hanover frontage and the railroad tracks and the overhead power lines that are running directly next door to the site.
I have two questions.
Sure.
Can you explain a little more for everyone's benefit, how community solar works?
Sure, so not everybody has the ability to alternate energy sources, whether your, your roof of your home is not structurally capable of supporting it, whether it doesn't face the sun in the right direction, or whether it's not viable for you to have solar or renewable, other sources of renewable energy at your own home or your business. The community solar program provides equal access to people who don't have the means of putting it in themselves by renting out their roof. So simply, you can go onto the state's, um, community solar website, you type in your zip code, you find out if there's any facilities in your area, you register and you start, once the systems are online, like you said, it's a 21% reduction from your current electrical needs. And again, 51% of the power here goes to low, moderate income households. This is a, still a newer state initiative. These projects are popping up all over the state. Solar landscape, like I said, is involved, they've completed 40 of them already, have another 100 of them in the works across the state. It's the, becoming a very popular process, as Ms. Jennings said, they're getting rid of the open space that we have in, in the state and not putting solar panels on that raw land and putting it on top of self-storage facilities like this, big warehouses, schools. Those are the types of projects that we are finding and we are proposing these community solar projects on. Again, a, a site like this will generate enough power for 100 houses. It's, um, it's a pretty, uh, new and exciting program that the state's offering and, uh, the applicant's very active in the program.
I, I do remember, um, this proposal and this site coming before us in some capacity a couple of years ago. I don't know if you remember that, could, could you fill in the details on that? Maybe, um, Mr. Slater, Mr. Phillips, I'm not sure who.
Yeah, we weren't here before.
I know you were not at the, uh, land use. I know you were not at the land use board, but I definitely recall us considering this project.
Yeah, what, what happened was the, the lot, the subject lot is actually included in the township's housing element and fair share plan. There is an affordable housing overlay for this site and it was thrown into the plan as part of the township's unmet need for affordable housing. At the time, when originally, years ago, they were first considering a solar project here, there was a question on whether or not that would, for lack of a better term, muck up the settlement with fair, fair share housing. Because the township had already gotten its third round compliance in order. What we ultimately determined is that this in no way interferes with the affordable housing overlay. And if this site were to ever be redeveloped as residential, it would be up to the then applicant to determine what to do with the solar panels. It's not really within the purview of the board. It would be the same sort of thing as if a developer came in and there were any sorts of pre-existing tendencies or contractual relationships on the site. So basically, that, that's why this may have jogged your memory. But, but really, the fact that there is an, an existing affordable housing overlay really is of little import for what they're trying to do.
No impact.
Correct.
Okay, good, thank you. And then one other question. When the panels are on top of the building structure that's there, those are storage units. And I'm just wondering what the noise level is if you're, you know, these, these are people using their storage units, what kind of noise emanates from this, if any?
The panels aren't generating any type of noise that would have any disturbance to anybody's storage facility, no. So there would be obviously some, some disturbance while they're being installed over the course of, you know, two months while the, not even that long, thirty days while they're putting in the panels and doing all the work at the site. But after that, there's no disturbance, there's nobody onsite doing maintenance on these. Solar Landscape has a maintenance plan where they're visited twice a year for inspections and repairs. But besides that, they put them up on the roofs and they do their thing and they're not generating any type of disturbance.
Good, thank you.
Welcome.
Can you describe the, the security of the ground pad? So around the ground pad, you said there would be an interior fence? That fence will be how high?
It's a six-foot chain link fence, privacy slots around the transformer. And the rest of the facility is gated as a self-storage facility so that only, you know, people with a storage unit there have access to the site or the solar company would be.
And there's cameras on the, within the complex?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Mr. Chairman? Oh, I'm sorry. I just, so I heard you state that the power from this installation, which belongs to J, goes to JCP and L's grid, but you also made a statement that the power would be used by residents of Morris Township with some percentage of it going to low-income households. How does that, if it goes into the grid, how does that, how does that work that you targeted at particular residents?
If you.
I don't understand how that works.
The, if you register for the state's community solar program and you are in a municipality that has community solar infrastructure or a surrounding town that has community solar infrastructure, you will receive a discount off your current electric bill. There's no cost JCP and L has required and PSCG, the electrical companies in the state are required to provide a certain percentage of their power from clean and renewable energy. This is how the, the major electrical providers in the state are meeting a large portion of their, their quotas for their renewable energy sources.
So the households are registered and that's how they?
Yes, you go online and you register, you will receive a.
Thank you. Yeah, that answered my question, thank you.
Mr. Ben.
So I guess it's, just one point of clarification. I thought I heard it said twice that the panels would be six feet away from the edge of the roof?
Correct.
Okay, in, maybe I'm looking at a dated application writer. In here it says four feet and that you're seeking a variance.
That was the original proposal, but at the fire, as the fire issued its report, we modified, we lost some of the panels.
I got you.
The project is smaller than what we originally proposed.
So no issue with that.
No issue, yeah.
And then I guess my general question is, when, if, if all the approvals are in place, when do you anticipate this being up and running and, and this source of energy being available?
We would expect the applicant to be, to be on the roofs or as soon as they're able to submit for a building permits, they would. And they would be up on the roofs this summer putting in the panels. So the idea would be by the end of the summer that they're finished here and they're waiting for JCP and L to accept the power into the grid would be the idea.
Let me, yes, yes, I was gonna, yeah, we kind of moved away from the professionals, so let's move back to that.
I know you had the equipment in the front yard, you had some issues and you moved out, which I think is a positive. But did you have the four utility poles at that point? Cause I can't remember it.
I, I believe at the course between the T, the TCC meeting and the ultimate submission back in January, the revised plans, over those months that we've been at this, the applicant's been, made more progress with JCP and L. Now that they have all their approvals in place through JCP and L, they've reviewed the infrastructure, they have their agreements in place, that's where the poles, the final location of the poles came in and we added them to the plan.
So that wasn't on the plans back in?
Original plans, no.
Okay, I just want to make sure we didn't miss anything.
No, that's why it's not noted in your, in the original letter.
The other thing is, if I understand correctly, the, the maximum height, you said was nine inches?
Nine inches, correct.
On the roof and you've got six-foot clearance from the roof's edge on all, in all instances, correct?
Yes.
I mean, I haven't seen a line of sight drawing, but I don't think you're going to be able to see it.
The adjacent properties are a little elevated, so you might be able to see them.
Is it really even? Cause it says, I think, the adjacent properties in the public roadways. You will, you will see it in some vantage points?
Possibly. We're, we're asking for the relief because, one, we need it because there's no parapets and two, we believe some sections of the panels may be visible from which direction you're coming from on East Hanover, if you're going southbound.
Yeah. And it's prudent for the applicant to request that now rather than it come up after reservation compliance is being considered.
Is, Mr. Slate, do you know, is the roadway between there and the other facilities, that it's, it's one of those weird things, is that a public road or private road?
No, it's a access.
Oh, okay. So that's not even a public roadway. So that's, you know, so they can see them from up there because they're definitely elevated, they're looking down on the roofs.
Yeah, not a public roadway.
Okay, but on Hanover, okay, that's, thank you.
And, and just lastly, do, and maybe this is for you, Donna, but do you think you also need a variance from thirty-four point four C to A? And in relation to what you described as a community solar program?
Can you read what that is? I don't have the ordinance memorized. Where, where, what, what is it again?
Net metering.
Yeah, so I mean, technically, this is not a met, net metering project. This is a community solar. So I don't know if you, I mean, it's sort of like distinction without a difference. You wouldn't really know what the panels are up there for, but you're, we're in, so say, net metering?
Yeah.
And the community solar probably came after you adopted your ordinance, I don't know.
Well, which is why I think it would be prudent for you as the applicant and we as the board, for you to seek that variance for purposes of the record. That's just my planning and non-legal opinion, but I'll defer to other.
No, I, I agree, especially because the, the definition of that specifically mentions onsite consumption. And obviously, the community solar is somewhat the opposite of that.
Did you explain, I don't, you lost me the, the details.
They, they're basically providing power for facilities that will be offsite, low and moderate income housing, where the ordinance was structured that it would be for onsite consumption only. And that's consistent with the definition, Mr. Chairman, of net metering in the, in the ordinance.
Okay, okay.
So I think it would be prudent to seek that relief just to preserve the record.
And their notice had the typical catch-all provision that allows them to seek any variances that may come up during the hearing.
Yeah.
So it in no way deprives the board of jurisdiction if it wants to consider that additional variance.
Yeah, so we would definitely request it because I, I really wouldn't debate that it's a net metering, it's, it's a community solar.
Two A.
Yeah.
That's all I had, that's all I had.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Phillips. Any other questions? No? Are there, is, any other? Do you have the planner? Okay, yeah, oh, of course, yes.
Thank you.
Oh, any, any, any questions from the public? I guess we forgot that for this witness. I guess not. And we'll proceed with your planner. Thank you.
Do you swear that any testimony you'll give in front of this board will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you state and spell your name for the record?
Sure. My name is John Tykeenitz, T as in Thomas, A I, K as in Kelly, I N A. I'm the president and principal of all things planning and development in South Brunswick, New Jersey. I've been a licensed planner in New Jersey since I completed Rutgers University in nineteen ninety-two. Had the pleasure of keeping my license for thirty years, so I, I'm told that's a challenge. So I've testified before more than a hundred boards around the state of New Jersey, including the zoning portion, I guess, of this board a couple of months ago.
Were accepted qualifications as a professional planner?
Proceed.
Just for the record, John, you've had an opportunity to visit the site and the area around the site?
Yes.
And you reviewed the township ordinance and master plan?
Yes.
And you've heard the testimony this evening of Mr. Shelley?
Yes, I did.
And you had an opportunity to review the reports of the consultants?
Yes, I did.
And if you could, in your professional opinion, has the applicant satisfied by the positive and negative criteria for the requested variances, including the new one that was pointed out this evening?
Yes, I believe we will. And I'll explain why.
Okay, thank you.
So the best part is when the planner comes up and takes the first two pages of his thing and throws it away. Gets a little shorter. So we do need relief from several portions of your, of your ordinance, both in terms of the accessory structures that are located in required yard areas and for certain, certain portions of your solar ordinance, if we'll call it that, in terms of having, not providing for net metering, but having, being in the community solar program. We will have solar panels on the roofs that will be visible from the surrounding roadway. As Kevin said, the East Hanover Avenue is particularly at the entrance to the, to the site is higher than, it's higher than the site and it's almost higher than some of the roofs. So you can certainly, if you can see the roof, you're going to see the panels and you can certainly see the roof. So I, I don't think it's going to be a negative impact in any way, it's just looking at a, a different type of roof, if you will. And then finally, where, that we don't have a parapet on these existing buildings. So they are all what are called a C variances or, in this instance. So the board would need to make several findings. The first is that it relates to a specific piece of property. And I think we can all agree very quickly that this specifically relates to this self-storage facility at three oh seven East Hanover Avenue. The unique site conditions here actually generate some of the relief in question. As Ms. Jennings said, as a renewable energy project, we satisfy the positive criteria as an inherently beneficial use. So the, the benefits of the project kind of by definition outweigh any detriments in, in terms of the C two criteria. And then the last thing we have to show is that, is that there are no negative impacts in terms of the master plan, the zone plan, or the surrounding properties. So we'll start with the surrounding properties. As Kevin said, the surrounding area is relatively industrial with, you know, a series of industrial uses, including self-storage just to the west, car dealers a little further over, public facilities, including the county jail and, and the public works and sewage facilities across the street. So we don't believe having solar panels on the roof of the self-storage facility are going to have any negative impacts on our surrounding properties. And then in terms of your master plan and your ordinance, the, your, your, your ordinance specifically set forth in its, you know, in its purposes to encourage renewable energy systems, to locate renewable energy systems in appropriate locations in the township and to provide adequate setbacks and buffers for renewable energy systems to minimize visual impacts on roadways. Now, again, one of the specific concerns, and this goes to meeting the master plan criteria, were in the twenty seventeen master plan reexamination, the board was concerned with installations that were going on and in ground-mounted facilities, installations that were going on in, as, in parking lot installations where you were creating additional structures just to provide for the solar energy facilities. So you were particularly concerned about the visual pollution associated with placing large-scale solar in open field green areas and stated a strong preference for the placement of such facilities on building rooftops and over parking areas. So we think that we are specifically implementing some of the, the terms of your master plan as it relates to solar facilities. We think that all the requested relief can be granted. It's relatively minimal, even the impervious surface at the additional hundred square feet. As the applicant has moved those facilities substantially back from the roadway, they are now, you know, in a side yard, you know, several hundred feet back from the road along a, a roadway and, and power line and right of way. And I note that the power lines in question that are literally twenty-five feet away from us are a hundred feet tall. So again, there's some substantial visual impacts. One thing I do want to point out, and I check it here again, the, in terms of the poles, there's really only two poles that are going in the front yard. There's one going right in the property line and then there's one going about fifteen feet back. The, the third and the fourth poles are going kind of even with the building and behind it. So I, I think, again, when we talk about, we keep talking about four poles and we agree there are four new poles, but really only two are going up in the front yard. So again, I think the applicant has, has done their best to minimize any of these potential negative impacts across the board. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for this witness?
So I have one more question about how the community solar works. I'm not sure if you're the person here.
I'm not.
Maybe, I don't know, it's sort of a follow-up to the one I asked before, so.
One of us will. It won't be me, but one of us will.
Okay. And maybe you can answer it, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm somewhat familiar with these programs, I'm, I'm supportive of it, but I'm interested in the, the detail. Like, if you're someone who lives in the service area of a project like this, how, how do you know about it? Do, do you guys send out a letter to the community or?
Yeah.
Does?
I've gotten them myself in my own home. They'll send you a thing and say, you have, you've been selected, you have the option and you have to do it by, I have, I just filled it out this week, by April thirtieth to fill this out and you can, or you can check that you want the JCP and L dirty energy. That's the choices. They give you two boxes. I want to promote clean energy or I still want to keep my JCP and L dirty energy.
So the letter would come from Solar Landscape?
Or, yeah, my, my thing was like Clean Choice Energy, I believe was the name of the, in my town.
Sorry, sorry to bring you back.
No, no, it's all right. It's, we also had a board meeting about a month or so ago where the board members were saying that they were, that, that they love the program, they were going to do things on their end to make sure that the township was able to put notice out any way they can through email or in, in newspapers and things like that to make sure that everybody was aware that these programs are starting to become available. And it doesn't have to be in your town, if it's in an adjacent town. Again, the, the idea is that these.
How far out does the service area go?
I, I think it would probably depend on the density and the population of the municipalities as well as the demand for the projects.
You've got to go quite a ways just to get to residential area.
Yeah, it, well, it goes back to JCP and L for then distribution back out to, you know, all the, the homes in this town and surrounding towns that it, that it services.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions for the planner?
Yes, Mr. Ben.
It satisfies you, I've been getting these clean energy letters for years.
It satisfies you. I've been getting these clean energy letters for years. I always figured it was a scam. Now I know to fill it out because I'm getting all this dirty energy.
Any other questions with the planner?
No.
Anything from our board officials?
Attempted to comment on dirty energy, but I'll stay away from that.
I was biting my tongue as well.
I probably would agree with you.
JCPN L is required to purchase a certain amount of clean energy. It's not all dirt.
Right, right, no, that's true.
No questions.
Okay, do you want to?
Public.
Public, any, yes, any public comment? Questions? Questions, actually, for this witness, right?
Can we go over the conditions?
Yes.
Sure. There was one that came up actually during the meeting, which was a detail added to the plan for the dimensions for the pad that's going in the side yard.
Well, specifically the setback.
Correct.
Right.
In terms of the the actual memos, I believe they've covered pretty much everything that wouldn't need to be a condition.
We have two more variants.
Right.
Request.
There's a comment about landscape screening around the equipment compound area, especially along Hanover Avenue.
It's not there anymore.
But they've moved it to the side yard, okay. Yeah, and that's, I think, it. They complied with the fire department's comment, which was had to do with the six-foot setback on the roof. So I think other than that, it's the standard conditions relating to, you know, bonding and things like that. The specific variances that are requested, if the board would like me to sum up the application.
Please.
Please.
Sure, it's a minor site plan. There's six variances necessitated by the development. One is relating to the visibility of the panels from the street. That's variance number one. Variance number two has to do with the lack of screening. The ordinance allows the rooftop improvement provided that it's screened by a parapet. That's not here. That's variance number two. Variance number three is the net metering that we discussed during the hearing because it's going for offsite consumption. There's a variance for that. Variance number four is relating to the minimum front yard setback. The utility poles do intrude in the front yard setback. Number five is the side yard setback for the pad that they've relocated. And six is a minor increase in impervious coverage. It's already deficient as it exists today, but because they are adding the hundred square foot of impervious surface, that re-triggers the variance. So those are the six. And provided that they, the board sees kindly on those variances, then it would be in a position to grant the minor site plan.
Can we add that if Jim is more successful than the applicant in dealing with JCPN L, then, then the applicant would move the poles to wherever Jim is able to to get?
Are you going to chase them down or?
I will definitely put another call in.
Okay, sure.
I think we already heard that two are actually in the front and the others are further back than originally.
Two are adjacent to the existing buildings.
So for the board, for the board's edification, the, really, what they're considering is the one that's closest because that's the one that impacts the setback the most.
Right, right. I have faith in Jim.
Pressure's on.
Does the applicant have any final summary?
No, I think that, as I indicated in the beginning, this is a project that does satisfy both the positive and negative criteria. It's a good thing for the community. It's a good thing for all of us and we respectfully request that the board grant us an approval.
So you agree with the conditions in the statement of the variance as stated?
As stated by the board's.
Okay.
And for what it's worth, I have represented community solar applicants in the past and the testimony is consistent with my understanding of how the program works and how residents can sign up to get their, you know, X percent discount. We've actually required, the boards have required us to send out those letters in the past. Boards have required those letters to go out in the past when I've gotten those projects approved.
So is that a condition of approval?
That's really up to the applicant, however they do it in their normal course of business.
I like dirty energy. I like dirty. Yeah, they do it. They have a community engagement department that does it.
We could, I could throw it in.
So it will be done?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
But we want to advertise it, obviously, we want to make sure people signed up for it, otherwise we're not making any money, right?
Well, I also think we want some kind of blurb on our own website just so we can inform our residents. So it would be helpful from a communication standpoint, if whatever appropriate wording you're using, we could use as well.
Sure.
So we don't ditch the letters.
It's all that dirty energy.
So the applicant will share the letters with the township?
Sure.
Okay, any other comments? Public, do we have any public comment? Guess not.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we move the application for approval with the conditions and variances set forth by our solicitor.
Second.
Any comments or any discussion? Okay, can you call the rules?
Yes.
Mr. Rabbit?
Yes.
It's Wilson?
Yes.
It's Ben Oner?
Yes.
The Ben Wa?
Yes.
The Flowers?
Yes.
The Allesa?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
I vote yes, and I want to thank you for remembering the two thousand seventeen comment about visual pollution. I think that came from me back in those days. So having solar mounted on the buildings is fabulous. I vote yes.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you. You too.
Thank you.
Okay.
You need those? Okay, sure.
Absolutely.
Okay, moving on. Any reports from our legislative committee?
Not tonight.
Not tonight, okay. Any public comments? I'm guessing no, so we'll, we'll close the public comment session.
We have one or two people online, but they can't comment.
But they can't comment, right?
What?
You can see the.
You're on the public. I'm on the panelist.
And I.
I see you, yeah.
I have not been informed that there's any need for a closed session, so.
Right here.
Yes, Mr. Les.
I just have a quick question, being that we're moving along quickly and we'll probably get home to see this basketball game. Quick question. I'm just, just question really for the professionals. Why would an application like this need to come before the plan? Why couldn't that be approved administratively? Not that I'm trying to put us out of work, but some of these things seem so simple. I'm just trying to understand what criteria.
Short answer, Joe?
Yes.
We're working on it. For the same reason that you raised.
But just the same thing with like a generator in the backyard. It seems like a waste of money for the applicant and time for us.
Discuss it and we're going to move forward with something along those lines.
Way to go, Joe.
I agree.
Streamline the process, get these things built faster.
Are there towns in which they would not need to go through this?
Lot of towns.
There are.
More township has it.
But it did come before us, before and not before the Land Use Board. And it was, got stopped, I guess, by that recall.
BPU, they need to get feedback from the township. It's a required element of their submission package to BPU. They have to confer with the local authority, so it probably went to the township committee rather than the board.
It did not go to the Land Use Board. I know that.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.